Good evening and welcome to the June 13th, 2017 meeting of the Gilderland Board of Education. Would you all please silence your devices and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda this evening is a showcase of student work related to Youth for Understanding Exchange students, and I'll pass it to Murray.
Good evening, everyone. We are with great anticipation waiting to hear from Mrs. Karen Covert-Jones and our students from around the world. So Karen, can I invite you to the podium?
Good evening. Tonight, I'm here representing the High School Exchange Program Youth for Understanding, better known as YFU. The YFU students who attend GHS are academic year students. They arrive in August and return to their home country the end of June. They're placed with host families in our school district. This allows them to fulfill their dream of living in the United States, improving their English language skills, experiencing an entire school year, and becoming a member of their host family. The exchange experience gives students from around the world the opportunity to see the world through American eyes. Their American host family, classmates, and teachers get to see the world through non-American eyes. Exchange students can't wait to join a sport team, experience school spirit, or be in a high school club, and all want to fit in with their classmates. Seven weeks ago, my husband and I traveled to Germany and Belgium, where we arrived at the Hamburg airport. Maita Schultz, a former YFU student at GHS five years ago, met us along with our daughter, Sarah Jones, who's completing her own YFU exchange year in Germany before she starts college this fall. They met us as we exited customs. They were holding a sign to welcome us to Germany. This was a whirlwind trip for us. We met Sarah Jones's host family, visited her school, met her teachers and friends. We spent an afternoon with the host family who hosted our son eight years ago. We went to Belgium to visit with my host mother from my exchange summer in 1973 and with my three host sisters. We had the great pleasure of meeting our German Sarah's parents. Yes, I have two Sarahs. And spending time with our German Sarah and her brother Nick, Sarah spent her exchange year at GHS in 2013-14, and we were her host family. Last year at this time, Nick stood here to thank you and his host family for his incredible year at GHS. When I walked into Nick's bedroom in his home in Germany, I was stunned. And when I saw the wall next to his desk, it showed how an exchange year can outwardly affect a student, and it made me smile. So I want to show you what I saw. You're looking at the same photo, so when it gets in the middle, you don't have to keep passing it. But if you look closely to the flag on either side, you will see Gilderland High School because he framed his certificates, and I think they're his sports letters, varsity It was a lot of fun to be there and talk about Gilderland High School, to hear their stories from both of them, from their exchange years in Gilderland. I truly want to thank the Board of Education members and school administrators for welcoming Youth for Understanding exchange students and allowing their dreams to come true. So I thank you. Tonight with me, I have Millie Jorgensen, who's here from Denmark, and Annie Vynant, who's here from Germany. Both girls arrived last August and are about to finish up their Gilderland High School exchange year. I want to thank their host parents, Nancy Lott and Andy Jewell, and Heather and Neil Kunta, also their host siblings, Windsor and Sumner Jewell and Katie Kunta. This is the second time for both of the families to host. Kunta's hosted in 2013 and the Jewells in 2014. I am so proud of how well these two girls have adjusted and have taken advantage of so many of the opportunities at the school and in our community. Millie played on the junior varsity volleyball team. Annie took ballet classes at Northeast Ballet Company, and with her host sister, performed in The Nutcracker at Proctor's. Annie joined cross-country ski team, track and field. And you might recognize Millie. Last week, she received a Board of Ed Scholastic Award. Choral concerts and being onstage crew for the musical were highlights for both of Many thanks to their teachers, who were so helpful as they adjusted to their new home, school schedule, and expectations, and a second language. Mr. Dvorak, their guidance counselor, I want to thank him for his help and advice all year long. I'm always grateful to the Gilderland High School students, who are curious and welcoming to the exchange students. It helps them fit in and feel at home in another country and culture. I'm always happy to talk with families and individuals who want more information on hosting or the study abroad program through Youth for Understanding. And now I'm going to turn this over to Millie, and then Annie will speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello. My name is Millie, and I'm 18 years old, and I'm a senior here at Gilderland High School. I'm from Denmark, and I lived in a little city 45 minutes from Copenhagen. I graduated two years ago and took a 10th grade on a boarding school. After that, I decided to go to America. I wanted to get better at speaking in English, learn a new culture, and grow as a person. My time at Gilderland High School has been an experience I will never forget. It had taught me so many new things about America and its unique culture. Since I was little, I have been watching American TV like High School Musical, where I saw how awesome high schools are, so attending Gilderland High School has been a dream come true. With me being here, I have accomplished many things, like being on a JV volleyball team, which taught me how good sportsmanship is, and GP, which taught me that I can truly be myself. Compared to Denmark, America is a country full of spirit. At my last concert choir, my last choir concert, I began to think about how school is more than just education. It's about being a part of a team, like choir, the arts, and the many sport programs at the school. People are always engaged in something, and it's not always about money either. I've seen from the school and family that volunteering is an important part of the community. The school showed me that being a part of something bigger makes you feel like you're making a difference. No matter who I walked up to or spoken with here at Gilderland High School, they've always been kind and asked me, "How are you?" Or, "You look great today." It's a big difference from where I'm from, and I will happily take it with me home and share it with others. I would like to thank the Board of Education for having us here today and welcoming exchange students into Gilderland High School and giving us students an opportunity to experience a daily life as an American teenager. I appreciate that a lot. I also want to thank the administration and staff. When I see you in the hallways, you're always kind-hearted and you greet your students. Then I want to like to thank my teachers. Mrs. Rudolph for teaching me US history in a way that always kept me interested in learning more. She's always really engaged and made each class different, different and new. Mr. Corona for teaching me criminal justice and being awesome in class. Mrs. Rayleigh for teaching me dance styles, choreography, and PE. Mr. Penner for teaching me how to be more confident in speaking in front of a crowd. Ms. Feeney and Ms. Teeter for giving me an opportunity to sing and express myself in another way. Mr. Maycock for teaching me cinema as literature. Ms. Sardi for teaching me how to use a computer keyboard without looking down. And Mrs. Ilario for teaching me art in different ways. Then I would like to thank my area rep, Karen Covert-Jones, for being around and giving good advice when I needed it. The meetings at your house has always been useful, and it kept me through the, and it helped me through the year. I thank to all my friends for supporting me in school and for all the cool times out of school, especially my best friend, Vivian Volotion. She was always there for me in good and bad times, and with her, I always felt myself. Last but definitely not least, I would like to thank, give a special thank to my lovely host family. Nancy Lott, Andy Jewell, Sumner Jewell, and Windsor Jewell. You have been all, you have all been so amazing. Living in your country made me wiser, and living in your city made me stronger. Living in your home made me better. To me, you're not strangers who hosted me for 10 months. To me, you're my family, and there is no one in the whole world I would have liked to stay with than you.
Hi, I'm Annie. I'm from Germany, and I was here as a junior at Gilderland High School for this year. During this year, I really learned a lot in school and about American culture and also about myself. Well, all of these reasons were why I chose to do an exchange year. But to be able to have the experience that I had, there are more people than just me who had to give their okay to make this year possible. I'm very thankful to everybody who was involved in any way in this amazing and wonderful kind of year that I will never forget. I want to thank the Board of Education for making it possible for me to come to this school. I want to thank all the teachers and coaches for being understanding and supportive throughout the whole time. I really enjoyed every class that I had, but I'm really thankful to each of them. I want to thank the staff at Gilderland High School and my guidance council, Mr. Dvorak, for being there and answering every question that I had. And of course, I want to thank my host family and now family for choosing me and being the perfect fit. As an exchange student, I got the opportunity to live with this family for one year and become a member. I was able to live the everyday life in a foreign country, which is not so foreign anymore to me, but the way, but the way that led to some confusing and funny situations. One of them was actually at the very end of the school year. Excuse me. We were playing cakeball in PE, and I wasn't too familiar with baseball, so I didn't know what the base was. So I was happy when I ran past the base, happy to scoring a point, until somebody shouted, "You have to touch the base." In my confusion, I ran to the fence. It took me a while to figure out where the actual base was. Yeah, altogether, I learned a lot of things, and I hope I can take them all back to Germany and keep them for the rest of my life. I felt very welcome at this school, and I'm very happy that I got to be here. Thank you.
I know in the past, the members have wanted to ask questions. Is that something you'd like?
Sure. Yeah, that would be great. Does anybody have any questions? Barbara?
I have my standard question. When did you start learning English in school? How young were you, or how old were you?
I started in third grade, so I was around eight years old, I think. Just like the basics, and then like higher English later.
Yeah, and it's the same for me. It's in third grade too in Denmark.
And the second question I have, what differences did you find between going to school in Denmark and in Germany? The way the classes were set up, how the teachers interacted, anything that you see as differences that you were able to experience here that you don't have as an example at home?
In Denmark, you only have like one class, and then the teachers have to go around. So here at Gilderland High School, like I was going around, so that was a new thing for me. That was one.
Yeah, like the schedule system is a bit different, so you have the same classes on Monday, the same classes on Tuesday. There's like one schedule for each day. So I like it here because you have, the weeks are always different. It's not the same class on Monday. It's like, if you have a harder and easier block, it's not always the hard block on Monday, so I like that.
Now, how about extracurricular activities? Do you have a similar situation at home?
Like activities?
Like activities, clubs and sports and music?
No, not really, because schools in Denmark are more only schools. And here, it's like you can go to a club, you can start like I did volleyball. So I really like that because then you can play volleyball with your classmates, and I like that a lot.
Yeah, it's the same in Germany. We don't really have any school sports. We just have PE class, and that's it. But we don't have the variety of sports that we do here.
How about art and music?
We don't have any musical and stuff like that.
Okay, I'm going to interject something, just for pure education. Annie's talking about her school in Germany. Because it's not all of Germany, where Sarah is an exchange student this year in Osnabruck. She actually has an orchestra in her school that she's joined. They have a climate club that they do, and they're actually, it's a pretty cool project. They're trying to make their city plastic bag free. So they will do things on the weekend to get together. And then I know this will surprise some of you, Sarah started a quidditch club at her high school. So schools are different. So they're each talking about their own particular school. Seema?
What's the biggest difference that you noticed between like the culture of the students? I think, is Millie? You kind of talked a little bit about like how students here have, they feel like a sense of patriotism, or just different than home?
Yeah.
Do you find us more patriotic? Or do you see the spirit?
Spirit? Spirit or? Yeah, definitely. Yeah, like, yeah, the flag to like standing up and say the pet of allegiance. Yeah, like the spirit here, like in the beginning of the year, there was a rally, a spirit rally. Like, I was like so amazed about that. Because we don't have stuff like that. It's just like the spirit and like on the teams too, they're like, you can do this, you can, like, they're just so helpful, and it's not what we, I normally see in Denmark. It's more like, just do it, you know? So, yeah.
Yeah, it's the same in Germany. Like, I feel like here you have a like school pride that we don't really have in Germany. Yeah, like you're really proud of your school.
Alan?
For each year, when you go back home, what will be the next thing that you'll do as far as studies go? If you, or maybe you'll go to work, I don't know.
I'm starting like kind of high school for three years, and it's more kind of business way, so I'm gonna study for that.
So like university here, or is it?
It's kind of between high school and college, but it's more like one way. Instead of like this high school, you can take a lot of courses, but where I'm going, it's more business. But it will kind of, if you translated it, is high school.
Do you consider it a college prep? What we'd consider a college prep school maybe?
Yeah, maybe.
Like sometimes they go to, here you have like a college preparatory, where after you graduate high school, you can go like for two years to what they call a college prep, and then from there, you go to?
No, I don't think that really, like, I graduated already in Denmark, but that was in 10th grade. And then after 10th grade, you take three years of high school, college, and after that, you go out and take your like degree in what you want for like how many years. If you want to be a doctor, it's more years. And, yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of the same thing. I will do, I will have two more school years when I go back. Like, we have 13 school years, so if I would be in Germany right now, I would be in eleventh grade too. So when I go back, I will just continue with 12th grade and then finish 12th and 13th.
Teresa?
Just one other question.
Can I just, sorry. Each school that the kids come from, it depends if their high school wants them to repeat the year or if they can move on. So when we hosted Sarah, who was from Germany, she had to repeat the year when she returned, as did Nick. So Annie, your school is not making you repeat, right? You're going on to the next year. So it really is an individual school situation, and that's true in the United States, too. It's difficult for New York students to do a year because of regents and get credit for it. So typically, if a student wanted to do a junior or senior year abroad, they would repeat that year when they come back.
I just had a question, because we're actually considering changing the hours of school. When do you guys normally start school, and what's the length of the day? Like, what's your start time and end time for classes?
In my old school, where I graduated from, I started, the school started at 8:15, and then we went home around 3 o'clock.
Yeah, my school started around 8:00, and we finished, I think at 1:00, when we had 90-minute blocks. So, yeah, three classes per day.
I'll tell you another really cool thing in the German school system. I don't know about the Danish one. If a teacher doesn't come to class to teach, there aren't substitutes. So the kids have the time. They don't go. They either don't go in the morning, they have a free block, but that's a real big difference. And that's the way it is for you, right?
Yeah. We have that too. And then you just get the hours after, like in the end of the year, then you can get there. Yeah.
Any other questions? Sure, Gloria? What are your hopes for the future? What do you hope to be doing 10 years from now? What do you see yourself? Five years?
I would like to start my career, of course, and like have a family.
What kind of a career are you looking for?
Maybe something like project, like managing, maybe project managing I'm kind of looking for.
Yeah, I was, would, I would like to go to university, maybe do something with like, like in medicine or something. I'm not really sure about that.
Well, your English is great. Both are believable. Done a great job.
Unbelievable.
Anything else? Okay, thank you so much for coming in. The next item on our agenda this evening is public comment number one. Linda, has anybody signed up? Okay. So we will now move on to our consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the May 23rd meeting, the CPSC and CSE recommendations, personnel action items, and the financials. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Seema? Second, Barbara? Are there any questions or comments? Alan?
Can we take the financial part off and talk about it when we have the journal entries, so we can better understand how those journal entries are reflected in the full budget expense reports? Because I tried to trace them, I couldn't, I couldn't figure out what, how to, they didn't, they don't look wrong, I just didn't understand where the debits and credits were going to be. I understand the two in the front, but I didn't get the, where you're taking stuff out, I didn't get, it didn't look like there was money to be taken out there. Or it looked like, yeah, it looked like there were, when you got to the column up to the far right, it didn't look like there was a surplus there, and I just wanted to know how you, maybe it's already reflected in there, I don't know.
I'm sorry, when you say journal entries, what, you mean the general funds transfers?
Yeah.
Oh, they're called journal entries in the biz?
Sorry. Are we taking off, are we taking off completely D or?
So D to take off?
We'll take off, Alan, all of D? Is that what you're?
You only have to take off the one with the, that has the, the expense report, whatever number, whatever letter that is. Is it D?
That's number two.
Two. I just want to be able to, when you go to the transfers, you see the two in the front, how to read it.
Can we take off six too? Because I have questions about that.
Do you have questions about that you'd rather ask later on?
Well, I could do it now. I could do it now if you want.
Let's see. Neil, what would make more sense? Do you want to talk about the questions in number six, which is fund balance estimate report, when we do business items, or would you rather?
Whatever the pleasure of the board is.
We can take them off, Chris, and ask them then. Anything else?
Just have one question. So, this is just a comment, just for maybe for the future, but I noticed that we have three school bus driver incentives, and I think we should look at that, because my understanding is that we're still struggling to get school bus drivers. So are we, are these incentives actually working, or there are better incentives we can look at? I don't mind doing it now, but I think over the year, we should look at how many people are actually accepting this, and is it really bringing people in, and is there something better we can do?
Anything else?
One other comment. Notice in the budget items, get what letter that is. I think it's the, in the personnel action, I think that's where it is, where you're talking about the claims auditor and all those people. And I see that's to be determined. If we aren't able to come to a meeting consensus, that'll just roll over to next year?
Correct. Correct, there will be no change.
Okay, but the question I guess I really have is, since we communicated to Donna that we would get back to her, are we going to make sure that we reach out to her and tell her that the committee wasn't able to come to a consensus on the meeting time? Was, has nothing to do with how well she performed her job?
We can absolutely convey that message, and whenever the board decides if there's going to be any change in rate, then we would just put that on a future agenda. So there's no time frame.
I'm not going to be here, so I just, and since I'm on that committee, I want to make sure that it comes across that, you know, we're not stonewalling, or it's, just weren't able to come to, everybody's calendars weren't able to sync up, and it's also not reflective of the kind of work that she was doing.
If the decision to change the rate isn't made until, say, September, when the new committees are put together, we could always make a retroactive payment for that individual.
Okay, I just want to make sure we communicate to her, okay? Because she's been a pretty long-staying employee, and
We'll do that.
I think not communicating to her would send her a bad message. That's really all I want to make sure we do, okay?
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I think, is it still a possibility that there may be a phone call on June 27th or 28th to discuss this issue? In which case, we would have resolution of it before?
I'm okay with that, I just
Okay, so it's not definite that we won't come to conclusion. It's a possibility.
It's, I want to make sure if it's, if we don't cover our bases, now we got them covered.
Got it. Okay. Okay, so all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, with the exception of financials, section D, number two, and number six, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, passes?
Before we go on, we have a number of individuals in our audience who we have appointed to employment here in Gilderland. Mr. Fensell, since you get the I'm Excited Award tonight, do you want to do the honors of introducing some folks?
So, good evening, everyone. We have two outstanding new hires for SOE Studies. To my right here is Mr. Matt Pinchenat and Tyler Lutchen. They're going to be coming onboard next year for our 2017-18 school year.
Very welcome. Thank you. Here comes Tom with some more introductions.
Everybody, it's my pleasure to introduce Ashley Kaplan, our new school counselor.
And then Melissa, I see you back there, Melissa Livingston. Oh, my mic's coming, here we go.
We're really happy to welcome back Melissa Livingston to fill our seventh-grade science position vacated by Dr. Fiero, so happy to have her back.
I just want to thank you all for coming. We're looking forward to having you onboard. So congratulations and welcome.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is information items, curriculum and instruction information. Murray?
Yes, Damian is under the weather, so I am filling in for him tonight. And the first item is an information item regarding a request to approve a textbook. This is The Martian by Andy Weir for use in Grade Eight Language Arts, and we'll be seeking approval for this book at the July 5th meeting. Next is the, oh, I'm sorry.
Is that, is that the Matt Damon movie? I was looking at that earlier.
Yes.
It's adapted, it's a
Is the book better than the movie?
I haven't seen the movie or read the book, in the interest of full disclosure.
Seema?
I just have a question, since this is like the second time it's come up where we approve a book. What's the process of like, because obviously, we don't approve every book that they assign in a classroom?
Yes, actually, you do.
Pretty much every book?
Yes.
It's going to be used as a text.
If it's a newer, if it's new to the
If it's new to the curriculum. Yes.
Good to know.
Okay, are we ready? The next is an announcement about our 2016-17 Spring Scholar-Athlete Awards, and the following teams have qualified for the Scholar-Athlete Award. Baseball, boys lacrosse, girls lacrosse, softball, boys tennis, boys track and field, and girls track and field. So once again, we are tremendously proud of our athletic accomplishments, but also that our athletes are tremendous students as well. So congratulations to all those teams, their coaches, and their teachers. Next is some Farnsworth Middle School students who participate in an eCyber Mission competition. Farnsworth Middle School eighth graders Amal Kumar, Anish Mupidi, and Daniel Kazi represented FMS at the eCyber Mission Competition, which is a web-based science, technology, engineering, and mathematics competition at the state level. They earned second place, plus $1,500 in savings bonds for a project titled "A Novel Small Cell Lung Cancer Detection Algorithm Using Artificial Neural Networks."
They're only in eighth grade.
And so you have it. That's pretty impressive. Next, waiting for my computer here. Oh, here we go. Next, I'd like to offer congratulations to Andrea Lurie, Grade 12, who was the third-place winner in the 2017 Benai Barith Capital Area Holocaust Essay Contest. Andrea was honored at the awards ceremony on June 7th at the Golub Center in the Jewish Federation Building in Albany. Andrea's win marks the 10th straight year that Gilderland High School has someone placed in the top three spots, so that's quite an accomplishment.
Wow, yes.
Wow, yes.
Next, I want to offer congratulations to Cassidy Stanley in grade seven, who received an honorable mention certificate from Scholastic for her submission to the Jackie Robinson Breaking Barriers Essay Contest. So congratulations to Cassidy. And another Farnsworth issue, or congratulations, this is to eighth grader Anish Mupidi, who placed first with his documentary Joseph Ropblatt and the Anti-Nuclear Stand at the New York State History Day. Anish is currently in Maryland, competing with hopes of surpassing his seventh-place national finish from last year. In addition, seventh grader Meghana Bupadi, documentary Nicola Tesla, Taking a Stand Against DC Current, as well as the group documenter, documentary Phyllis Schlafly, The Female Against Feminism, by seventh graders Jonah Chen and Melody Yu, both placed fourth in the state competition. So just tremendous accomplishments. And that concludes Dr. Singleton's report.
Great, thank you. Next, we move to school business information. Mr. Sanders?
Thank you. First item this evening is the results of an audit that was conducted by the Office of the State Comptroller. They were here for about a four-month period from late fall into the early part of this year. And what they were looking at were cash dispersments, which were basically payments to vendors. So they looked at transactions over the course of about 16 months, from July 1st, 2015 to September 23rd, 2016. They tested records for over 7,000 checks, covering over 25,000 invoices, with payments totaling over $189 million. The results of their report were that there were no findings, nothing that required corrective action, and no findings of anything that we would need to do or change differently. To quote from the report, "We commend district officials for designing and implementing effective policies to help ensure the accuracy of cash dispersments." And I would like to acknowledge the role that all our administrators, many of whom are here this evening, as well as their staff, in ensuring purchases and payment authorizations are made in accordance with state law and board policy. And I would also like to acknowledge the business office staff of John Rizzo, Heather Kisby, Nora Mahanes, Tammy McGill, Linda Livingston, and Donna Jorzinski, for their careful daily diligence in ensuring that all payments are accurately recorded and properly documented.
And acknowledge Neil Sanders. Yes, leadership, these matters.
Nice job.
We have a great staff who's very diligent in their work, and they should be commended for that. So, that's on the good news front. Now, we're going to talk a little bit about water testing for lead, and this again is another good news story. We did some retesting of the elementary schools. We had some results that were above the action level, where we had to go in and do remediation. We did those remediation efforts, and as a result, we went ahead and retested as required to do so by law. We did have some results that were still above the action level from that. So out of 69 samples taken across the five elementary schools, there were 55 below the action level, and 14 that were still above the action level. So for those 14 water outlets, we will install filters, which is an approved remedial measure. They will have to be retested again before they can be used for drinking and cooking purposes, but all of these water outlets are sinks. So those that haven't passed, or gone below the action level, will not be used for any of those purposes until they are retested. We still are waiting results from the middle school and the high school from remediation efforts and retesting in those two buildings. So hope to have those soon.
Sure, yep.
Just, just two quick questions. One is just to make sure, it's stated, so that none of the drink and fountains have action level above anymore, right?
Yep.
And number two, I don't need it to know tonight, but I think it would be important to know, how much are we budgeting for the cost for the water testing? And what is the procedure? I know it's unclear how much we're going to get back.
Well, we've, one of the transfers we're going to talk about a little bit later has to do with remediation. We spent about $88,000 so far, that's not...
$88,000?
$88,000 on testing and remediation efforts. We're not done yet with the costs, that's still to go. We had estimated, when the state asked us to estimate back in the fall, the cost, we're estimating about $150,000. So, still not sure where we're going to land, we don't have the results of the middle school and the high school, we haven't got all the bills in from the elementary schools, and we still have some more retesting to do there. So, I certainly think it's conceivable we're going to be over $100,000 for this.
And then the state piece, is it, my, it's not clear, or?
No, I think it's pretty clear now, we're going to get reimbursed for our expenses at our building aid ratio, which is 64.8%, roughly 65%. So right now, based on the $88,000, that would be about $31,000 that we would have to pay out of pocket, so to speak, not reimbursed by the state. But we have more expenses to come.
But, do you know the timeframe in which you get reimbursed, or is that...
It should be coming, everything we've seen so far should be coming next year, it's on the aid runs.
So you can't submit bills now, you have to...
Right, we submitted a preliminary, we'll, we'll be submitting actual bills when we, at the end, when we provide our end-of-year expenses, we'll have actual amounts in there. And then the state is going to aid that as part of our building aid payments for the following year.
Oh, okay, I see, okay.
Alan?
As the testing goes, so the samples, the water fountains or water outlets that we've tested so far, do they ever have to be retested again, or is it, is it an ongoing thing that happens?
Oh, yes, there is periodic retesting, I think every five years, we'll have, we'll have to go through the testing protocol again.
Okay, so we should be planning to budget that every, roughly every five years?
Yeah.
With the same protocols we have now, where it'll be some portion aidable and some portion...
At that time, I'm assuming most likely we'll be in the same boat, but...
Teresa?
I just had a question as to why it would go from, why we have results above action level now that we didn't have before.
No, these were all that were, all that were above the action level before.
Right.
So we had to do remediation efforts to those. And then as a result of redoing, doing the remediation efforts, we had to retest again, and these are results from the retesting.
But in some of them that we retested, they were below, like for example, Linwood had five that were below action level, and seven that after, above...
They tested 12.
There were 12 total.
Oh, 12 total, and, okay, so that's what we still have.
So now, now we're going to retest 14, and of those, then they'll come back and say how many?
I misread that chart, thank you.
Seema?
Is there a timeline for the, so the outlets that were exceeded and they have to get filters, and then when they get retested?
Yeah.
For that?
Yeah.
No timeline, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Neil.
One more item this evening, our annual fire inspections were completed and have been sent to the State Education Department. The fire inspections were performed by Charles Cahill Jr., who's the deputy fire inspector of the town of Gilderland, and members of the fire prevention staff. Any compliance issues that were identified have been corrected, therefore there are no areas of non-compliance that are noted on the reports. And the reports are available for public inspection at the district office.
Okay. Any other questions for Neil? Okay, now we move on to superintendent information. Marie?
My first item is regarding the fall 2017 New York State School Boards Association Convention. The annual convention of the New York State School Boards Association will be held in Lake Placid on October 12th through the 14th, 2017. Registration opens this Thursday, June 15th. If we register before July 15th, the registration fee is discounted. So if board members are interested in attending, you can please let Linda Livingston know. And I know we have one free ticket, right, to go to the convention? Thanks to Ms. Judy Slack, so that's awesome. And I know, Barbara, you also wanted to mention something about a potential submission. So why don't you jump in?
Okay, as you probably all know, the Resolutions Committee for the NISBA organization is taking resolutions from boards like ours. And what I throw out to the staff here is that, could we present a resolution on school start times being earlier? We've talked about it as a board many, many times. I can remember back in the 90s, a parent came forward shortly after the original 93 studies, asking us to consider and to look into ways of making start times for adolescents later in the, in the morning. Maybe about five years ago, I think some of you were on the board, when a student came forward, having done some research, again, about the, the benefits of start, of the start time being later. As I think some of the articles that you folks have read, the circadian rhythm of a teenager is distinctly different from a youngster, and from an oldster like me. They just, because of the melatonin levels, which are verifiable, you know, by testing, just do not allow them to easily fall asleep before 11 o'clock, or wake up before 8 o'clock. And yet, as a society, we have consistently gone from later start times to earlier start times. There are all kinds of studies that have been done that verify the benefits, you know, of, of this later start time. Numerous medical groups have issued statements on the benefit of later start times. I have a list here of the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Medical Association, the American Academy of Sleep Medicine, the American Association of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry. In addition, the National Institute of Health, the National Association of School Nurses, the Society of Pediatric Nurses, and even former U.S. Education Secretary Arne Duncan have urged later start times. I'm also aware that the California PTA, the state organization, has come out in favor of the later start times. The issue has attracted the attention of numerous state and federal legislators. California, Maine, Massachusetts, New Jersey, Nevada, Pennsylvania, Rhode Island, and Maryland have all had legislation introduced regarding, you know, later start times. Maryland's governor recently signed a bill incentivizing school districts to have this later start time. So, I know if we were to ask for a resolution demanding later start times, it would be a hard sell, because this issue is like moving the Titanic. So what I would propose, and let me just read what I just sort of jotted down this afternoon, to see if we could at least submit something along these lines. I would say, in light of sound and definitive scientific evidence that an 8:30 a.m. or later school start time for middle school and high school students is certainly in their best interest, we hereby request that the New York State legislators pass no-cost incentivizing legislation that would recognize New York State school districts that implement evidence-based school hours for their middle school and high school students. It's a very bland resolution, but I see it as maybe beginning, having people discuss the issue. And of course, it would have to be approved by the Resolutions Committee, and, you know, go through the process. But I thought it would, it'd at least begin the discussion and begin educating our community that if we're really here for kids, the evidence is there, that they learn better, they have less anxiety, they have less depression, they have less automobile accidents, their grades get better, eating disorders, cardiovascular problems. Recently, there was a study done in 2014 of 9,000 students, high school students, from three different states, I think it was Wyoming, Colorado, and Minnesota. And they followed these kids for three years. And again, you know, did this medical testing, the schoolwork and all that. And the evidence was just overwhelming, that, you know, school performance was better, there were less accidents, there were less visits to school counselors. It was just a very positive report. So, I throw this out because we would have to vote today to submit the resolution, and I just wanted to get some feedback if, if we could sort of take this milquetoast approach to at least raising the issue, and if, you know, we could support something like that.
Does anybody have thoughts on this? I know it's something we've discussed on numerous occasions. Gloria?
I could certainly support it, I mean, I, I'm aware of a lot of the research as well. And I think you're right, Barbara, I think it's like moving the Titanic. But if you don't get the first inch, and I think it could get some serious conversation started, because right now, you cannot get it started. It's like it's immediately shut down, for lots of different reasons, so I could definitely support that.
Seema?
I could also support the resolution, it's, and I didn't know that Maryland had like an incentive at the statewide level, so I think it would be a way to advocate that, you know, if something changed at the state level here, then maybe more people would be open to that. As I said, a lot of states are, are addressing the issue. Most of them are just, again, taking very small baby steps, and we'll be set up a commission. Well, you don't really need to set up a commission, the evidence is there. But even with Maryland, now the governor's actually signed the legislation, it's very bland, because they sort of make you a blue ribbon school, or something like that, so there's, there's no financial incentive or anything like that. But just, the people that were advocating for that just said it just makes one community aware, if some, if one community does it, that the other communities, oh geez, why aren't we thinking of our kids? You know, and it just moves the conversation forward. So, as I said, it's a first step.
Chris?
Well, I've always been supportive of making a start a late time, but I, the only thing I think someone might ask you is, does your school support it? Like, I know the board supports it, but, you know, we could do it, we could do it if we wanted to, but, you know, do, do the administrators, do the principals, do they support? I'm just saying that that might be a question, and I'm not sure.
The discretion isn't so much. Do we support it if we do, but we sort of have to have the other schools in the area, you know, it can't be one person do one school. Do it, well, it, it makes it, it makes it difficult. I mean, our middle school already has, has a good start time.
A high school could, if we wanted to tomorrow, we could, we don't need other people to make our high school later, some, a little bit later, we could definitely make it later. We could. But I don't think that we have the, the full support of people in the high school to do it. And I think when you go to, I won't be, but when you're there, I think people will bring that up to you, will, do you have the support of your school to do this? And I think you have the, the board's support, but I'm not sure if you have the school's support. So I think that, that's going to be the tough question that people are going to bring back to you.
Chris, we, we recently talked about ourselves as a board, sort of being leaders in the community, and I think this is one issue where that leadership effect could, could be positive.
I agree 100%. I'm just saying, I think that's a question you're going to have to, I think, be ready to answer, which is, would you be ready to do it?
Kathy?
I was just going to say, I remember years ago spending quite a lot of time on a, on a committee, the time of day committee.
You and I were both on that committee.
And it was, it was kind of an exercise in futility in the end, because there was just so many reasons not to change. There were, there were just a lot of talk about it, and then in the end, you know, there was a lot of resistance to changing. I mean, this was a long time ago now, but I, I think you're right, I mean, just get the conversation started, and especially at the state level, because, you know, it's, it is, it is tough for just one school to do it, because then, you know, then your schedule is different from the other schools nearby, and, you know, all the different things that go on after school are hard to coordinate, and so it just, it just becomes...
Transportation.
Yeah, it just, and, yeah, transportation is always a, you know, a puzzle. So I think, I mean, I would support that, your resolution.
Alan?
Excuse me, I, I agree with Chris, I mean, I think as a board, we do support that, but the real question's going to be when you're asked to, how, how well you're following your support, they're going to look to your school district and see, what are you guys doing? And again, I have no clue whether we are receptive to doing that here or not, and I know there's a lot of logistical issues with other school districts and sports and stuff like that, but again, you can be a can-doer, or you can be a can-doer. And again, I, I'm a big can-doer, so...
I think Marie has reported to us on a number of occasions that she's spoken to her colleagues about this, several times. Marie, is this something that you want to comment on, the comments that Chris and Alan made?
Well, like most things, the devil is in the details. And so, I, I don't see that there's any problem at all with the board taking this kind of a step, and saying that we're, we can look at how this would play out in our school district, but the board will also then need to be in a position, if this requires some resources, to make this a priority over other things, which when we get to budget time, you know, I'm not sure what that would look like. And I do think we'd need to work with the leadership team at the high school to say, you know, how does this play out, and what's the impact on the elementary schools? There's a lot of questions, so can I sit here on June 13th and say, sure, we can do this? If it is the board's direction, we can, we can be off schedule with the other school districts, but there will be trade-offs, and, and we have to be prepared for those trade-offs. And so, it's just like most things that we work on. If this is a priority, and this is the direction we want to go, we can start working on it.
I think that, there, I think we should... I think that there, I think we should answer the question, which is, if we want to go in this direction, how would we do it? And I don't think we've ever seen that.
We've talked about it theoretically. It's flip-flopping start time for elementary and high school potentially. So, we would gain...
What say you just wanted to do for the high school? Like, what would that look like? Because I know there is, I know the concerns about the elementary school.
So, just to move the high schools like to the start at the same time as the middle school? I think that's transportation. So, it's the purchase of however many buses we need to get two-thirds of our school population to school at the same time.
And other school where kids, where we transport kids to other schools and BOSI's kids.
Yeah, it would be a lot of logistics.
Things you don't think of. You think of our kids and how it would benefit them, but...
It's not saying it can't be done, but it's a major change.
But that's, I think, the problem is, even though I agree with it, is that when you bring this up and people bring up to you, well, can your school do it? Then someone might say to you, well, even your superintendent says it can't be done. Or, you know, like there might be issues.
No, what I would say is, the superintendent says, if we, if you have to do it, we'll do it. That's what I'll say.
But then recognize the trade-offs.
Right.
And that's, when my peer group talks about it, that's what we come down to. When you look at, how much time can you actually gain? And for some of our neighboring school districts, when they have looked at the logistics, they can only gain 20 or 25 minutes. And to get that 20 or 25 minutes, they're either huge costs that mean we do this instead of that, or there are the trade-offs that have to do with activities at the end of the day and do students leave class early in order to get to their competitions. And that's, not to say you can't do it, I'm just saying it's, you have to weigh, are the benefits, you know, more than the liabilities? So, that's what the conversation is.
I would just add that, again, based on what you're saying, probably should, your peers and everybody in this district included should write down the pros and cons of doing it and come up with, you know, rather than saying, use of the logistics, I mean, to me, I'd have a list of, this is the good reason, this is what it, and what it will cost approximately, okay, or our staff, what it will cost. This is what our cons are against, and this is what the costs of the cons are too. So, you're sitting down and you're making, as you like to say, a data-driven...
You're using my own words to catch me here, Alan.
Yes, I am.
Fair enough.
Because I think, I think ultimately, let's say, if you did the whole thing with the elementary school and you put costs aside, how many minutes can you actually obtain at the end of the day? I think that's something that would be interesting to look at. So, if you did, if you did this schedule like you talked about, you know, Barbara mentioned 8:30, you know, obviously, I can probably get to that point, but how much later can you really do for the high school?
I don't know. Just, I mean, I can't answer that off the top of my head.
But that's something that's, you know, when you talk about it, I mean, if you come back and you're like at the other district and say, well, we can do 15 minutes or 20 minutes, you know?
Well, if we were simply to flip-flop, we would start at quarter of eight, which is still 45 minutes earlier than the recommended 8:30 start time.
Right. And how much early, how much later is that in the high school?
An hour and we start at 7:25, so it's 20 minutes.
If you just flip.
You mean flipping elementary with high school?
So, the first pickup would be elementary, the second pickup would be high school, and the third pickup would continue to be the middle school.
We don't move middle school, we're just flipping high school and elementary?
Right. I mean, the middle schools fall under the same, I think, research that Barbara was citing about circadian rhythms, I think was the phrase, so...
And I also think that because the middle school starts as late as they do, that would be, that would be bad for the high school because of the sport issues and whatever after-school activities. So, I think the elementary hour is actually preferred for that reason, right? Because usually, they start at 4 o'clock for after-school activities. And right now, they get out at 2:30 or 2:20 or whatever it is now. So, I think that would be reasonable to have it be a later time.
Right, so if the school day ended at 2:40 instead of 2:20?
Yeah.
They still can get there because it's 4 o'clock.
But then the question becomes, is that 20 minutes worth it?
Right, no, right.
And that's the question.
The other part of that, too, you can, I think you have to consider it. In the wintertime, when it's 7 o'clock in the morning and there's a first grader out on the street trying to get the school bus, how many parents would be in a lie over that? I suspect that a lot of...
I think most working parents would appreciate that, that they get another kid.
I don't know, I'm just saying, I don't know.
That's what I would think, because I would be more comfortable with my high schoolers getting out on the school bus later than my elementary school child going off to school.
To support a resolution, though, today, right? We don't have to get into like the weeds and that.
I support you, Barb.
And by that time, we'll know when the bus is exactly going to come to your house, therefore, we don't have to be outside.
That's why you need to have the pros and cons.
Okay, it doesn't seem as though we have a consensus in supporting the resolution today.
We do have a consensus.
No, we do.
Okay. All right, so then we will need a motion to suspend the rules to vote on this submission of this resolution. So, Alan, second. Seema? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 9-0.
Hopefully, you get as good of a discussion as...
Now, we will need a motion to approve submission of the resolution related to school start times. Barbara? Second. Alan? All those in favor?
Aye. I will worst submit it either with you or Marie or whatever. And I know how you actually submit these things and all that.
Great, thank you, Barbara.
Thank you.
Okay, we're still in information here. My next item is regarding our high school graduation ceremony. As you know, our graduation is Saturday, June 24th at 4:00 p.m. The university has instituted some new security measures, so we want to just review those for everyone. We've been informed that the Sepq Arena will be conducting bag checks for anyone entering the graduation ceremony. This is a new security measure that the university has put in place, so we're recommending that folks not bring in any bags so they can enter the arena more quickly. Due to these measures, the general admission time has been updated. The doors for general admission will be open at 3:00 p.m. and handicapped admission will begin at 2:45 p.m. In addition to this, a parking pass will need to be displayed on any car parked in the Sepq parking lot. And parking passes will be included with tickets in each senior's graduation packet. So, we're very appreciative of everyone's cooperation with this.
And we've gotten them.
And I believe all of our board members have now received those. So, you just need to have them on your dashboard when you come. Okay, our next item is a chance to recognize Ellen Simpson for his service to the Board of Education. Ellen, we'd like to thank you and recognize your years of service devoted to the Gilderlin School community. Mr. Simpson was first elected to serve the board in May of 2010 and has served for two, three-year terms in addition to one year of an unexpired term. He was the board president during the 2015-16 school year and vice president during the 2013-14 and 2014-15 school year. And he has served on all four of our board subcommittees, audit, business practices, communication, and policy, in addition to serving as the PTA liaison to our schools. So, Ellen, we want to thank you for your time, for your service, for your very difficult questions that are thankfully usually directed at Mr. Sanders and service to our community. So, you'll be wrapping up at the end of this month, but we have a little something to recognize your service.
Thank you very much. Thanks so much, Ellen.
And if there's a way that we can keep him as president of the audit committee?
Yep, I was just thinking that. Ex officio?
Ellen?
I'm sure Ellen will be thrilled.
Yeah, thank you for everything that you've done. You will be definitely sorely missed on the audit committee, but we'll miss you here a lot too. And your questions, I think you add something to the board that's now not going to be here anymore, so...
Right.
As I said, to some of you, the rest of us are going to have to step up in that area.
Exactly.
But thank you. It has been a real pleasure and an honor working with you.
Well, thank you for the recognition, and it's been a pleasure working with all of you. I've really enjoyed it. I think everybody's really professional, the staff here is really very professional. And I'm glad I could be, work with you all, and I've learned a lot by working with you all. So, thank you just as much as, hope you've helped me as much as I've helped you, I hope.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
Don't be a stranger.
Watch us on Channel 16.
I don't get Channel 16. 33 then.
Watch us on YouTube. There you go. My next item is regarding the Gilderlin Historical Society and Gilderlin Garden Club, an event they're holding this Saturday, June 17th. The historical society and garden club are holding an open house at the Minder's Frederick House, a town-owned historic home located at 461 Main Street in Gilderlin Center. The historical society members will provide tours of the historic house, which was built in 1802 and is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. The event will include a display of items from nearby historic, our very own cobblestone schoolhouse that was built in 1860. And that is, as you all know, a former one-room schoolhouse that is owned by the district and located just down the street. We will be encouraging, or I should say, the garden club and historical society will be encouraging people to take a stroll down the street. We will have the lawn mowed and everything appropriately weed-whacked and a flag hanging to welcome folks to come to the grounds. Obviously, it won't be open to go inside. The other thing that's interesting is we have found a production of a video, now on DVD, Headband VHS, called "Gilderlin Schools of the 1800s," which the historical society will be playing on a loop at the inside site, so we can get a good view of what things may have been like back in the 1800s. It was narrated by Deb Escobar and produced by Nick Visio. So, it should be a lovely afternoon. And as you know, we're getting ready to begin repairs on that later this summer, so all is good.
Just a question, is this an annual?
The garden club thing is an annual.
Yes, but I don't know if they've ever joined forces together to have this event.
I haven't been there, but I don't think they have.
It could become the first annual.
Mm-hmm.
My last item, if we're ready to take on the last one, I was approached by Capital Region BOSI's about a week and a half ago with an offer to consider adding a ninth-grade placement to Tech Valley High School for the fall of 2017. And the tuition for the first year of this four-year program would be waived for a second student to attend Tech Valley. We would be responsible for tuition for that student in grades 10 through 12. And the tuition is set through a five-year averaging, and there is aid on it. And once you calculate all of that, it's about a $6,000, estimated $6,000 per year cost for a second student to attend. We did have four students on the waitlist in the initial lottery for attendance at Tech Valley. But I need some feedback on the board to see if you would be comfortable with approving a second placement for the upcoming school year.
Seema?
I mean, I would be in favor, especially if there's a waitlist. And I know that Dad spoke earlier this year that, I know the number of students who are interested fluctuates all the time, but here is an opportunity where we get, it gets a discount, and there's interest, so I don't see why we wouldn't, because it's, you know, they do project-based learning, it's a great, have a different opportunity for kids.
Chris?
Well, I would disagree. I would just, more of a finance piece, but I think, I see this as a marketing point. It almost reminds me back in the day in college when you go through Student Union and they would, you would sign up papers and you'd get like this really cool t-shirt, and then you realize you were signing up for a credit card, and then the kids got these, it was truthful, and then they had problems afterwards. To me, this is the same type of scheme, which is, you know, I understand the benefit, but, you know, I know you're getting the first year, but then you are going to end up being three years. And then, once you do this, then next year, it's going to be, oh, you can do maybe two students or three students. And how many are we going to go down the line and then we're going to be paid? I'd rather use that money towards the students here and offering programs here. So, I wouldn't be in favor.
I have a follow-up question. We've been involved in this for a number of years. What, with the kids that have gone, what has the differentiation been in their education that they've gotten at Tech Valley versus here? And how have a lot of those kids fostered when they've gone on to the next part of their life? Have they done better than a Gilderlin student, or have they been better prepared to do other things?
Well, I don't have that data at my fingertips, but I will say that, you know, Tech Valley High School is a very unique learning opportunity. The approach that the school takes around project-based learning and interdisciplinary approach and kind of a collaborative working environment among students where they dive into real-world, relevant problems, even while learning Regents diplomas and taking Regents exams, I think is a very special set of circumstances for kids, many of whom may march to the beat of a bit of a different drummer and find that they have a much greater affinity for that approach to schooling than here in our own high school. So, you know, anecdotally, I can say, students have very much appreciated the opportunity. It is, if you haven't been there and seen what happens, it is so worthwhile to do so. The learning space itself, the instructional strategies, the approach that teachers take to work with kids, to be interdisciplinary, to think creatively about how content areas fit together. I think we're very blessed to have this school within our confines. So, I don't entirely disagree with Mr. McManus that this is a, has a bit of marketing to it, but I also know that we have some pretty disappointed students who really want to go. And when I weigh, I guess I'm always weighing the trade-offs here, I mean, I am supportive of this. We can think about the budget. It doesn't affect next year's budget, which is already done. We can plan for it in the subsequent years. And the reality also is that sometimes kids come and go from that program, they move out of the area. We rarely have a stable four placements there for one variety or another. So, I don't think, when all is said and done, the cost will be, you know, prohibitive to our operation in any way.
My point is, though, like, if they offer this for all four of those students, would we take it? And I'm just saying, like, when, I'm not trying to make you answer that, I'm just saying, like, when do you really stop? You know, they need numbers and stuff like that, and they continue to offer these type things, when do we stop? And that's going to be hard.
Well, that's kind of a question for the BOSI's and how they sustain their own programming, but I'm advocating for kids.
And if there's a different, you know, number of students interested in every year, you know, if this year, there was no waiting list, then we would say, well, no. But, you know, they're going to change depending upon enrollment. I have some experience there through work, and like Dr. Wiles said, it's just such a, you know, transformative experience and just something you're not going to get at like a traditional public school. And I think if kids are interested in that, and I know, like you said, there's marketing, but if that's the incentive at district level to help, you know, the kid go there, then I don't see why we wouldn't do it.
I guess I'd ask a follow-up question. Since it's kind of run by BOSI's, how come it isn't part of our BOSI's regular program? Why do we have some special assessment or special tuition for it? Why don't...
Well, it is part of our typical, I mean, it's under the broad umbrella of career and technical education, which we don't limit our students in.
That's my question. Part of that, why is there a limit on it?
I think there's a limit on it because the board has put a limit on it of four students in past years. So, I would not, if this were a straight CTE program and a student said, I want to attend culinary arts or, you know, any of the programs, we would send them. But because we've had this conversation that four slots is it, I wouldn't add a fifth without making sure the board's comfortable.
I guess what, the way I better phrase the question, if we had, do we have, why don't we have limits on how many people go to CTE for culinary, for example?
It's against the law.
So, again, why doesn't this fall under that same umbrella? And I know you may not...
Technically, it does, but within our school community, we've said four, one per year.
What's it cost to send a kid to CTE?
It's about the same...
A little bit less.
A little less. CTE is a half-year, half-day program, though. This is a full-day program.
Okay, so the difference in cost is, you know, if you do it on a per-hour or per-minute basis, it might be a wash. I mean, I don't know.
Actually, I'd...
I guess my argument would be is if, if we're, if the school system or the culture we live in is so tied to CTE and the BOSI's program, why are we, and this is a BOSI's program, why are we limiting ourselves to that particular item? It doesn't, intuitively, it doesn't make sense to only...
That's a question for your colleagues here. I would be thrilled if you said we could send as many as we want, and BOSI's would be delighted.
I'm sure they would, but again, from the perspective of looking at it from BOSI's and CTE, I don't see how it's any different.
Well, because one is, right, is a specialized program is what you're talking about, so they're going for a half-day.
So is culinary.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm talking about culinary. This is, the difference is you're going to Gilderlin or you're going here. There's a difference.
But again, the big thing is STEM, which is, this program, I believe, is a big part of STEM. of STEM, so I would, I would look at that because of the push that we in America have to be more STEM-conscious, that we shouldn't be limiting our kids to not be able to go to that. If we don't offer that here, then where else are they going to get it?
The original idea, though, when this thing was set up, if you recall, was that they were going to pilot these types of programs with the intent that they would then be distributed and taken up by schools such as ours. And I really wonder if any of that has actually happened.
We have actually done quite a bit of that. We've had teacher exchanges, we've had some of our staff go and visit. They've done professional development here in our high school. So we've made a conscious effort to do, because they had the dual mission, to run a separate school, but also to take those approaches to education and kind of lead the way to transform local high schools and middle schools too, for that matter. That has, their capacity to do both of those has maybe not matured as they had anticipated, but because they're so close and because we really do find what they're doing to be unique and probably the direction that all high schools should be going. Mike Fiscatelli worked with Laura Latonan, I believe, to coordinate some of those exchanges. So that's still on our radar, but actually, sending a student there is a different experience than having, you know, the influence of instructional practice as opposed to being immersed into it.
Again, I believe the philosophy behind BOSI's with the CTE is it's too expensive for particular districts to have a shop, for example, for auto, heavy-duty auto mechanics or for heavy-duty construction workers that are going to be operators of cranes and bulldozers and stuff like that. Again, I would look at this and say, do we have the resources that they have at Tech Valley? If we don't have equal resources, then if we're really in it for the kids, then I'd question why we aren't, why we have a limit on it. The same reason you're questioning why we don't have later start times. I mean, if we're truly in it for the kids and it's the best thing for the kids, I would advocate that we shouldn't have a limit on it, especially since it's, it's really an extension of BOSI's, if we don't limit BOSI's right now, because we can't legally. But I see this as completely different than those programs.
I agree with Alan. I agree with Alan. If we're truly about meeting kids at their needs and what they might need, then we should be looking out for them and recommending them. And as Seema pointed out, you know, we may have four one year, we may have zero the next year. But we should be looking at our population, as you've always said, that's what we do. We look at our kids and say, what would be best serve them? And that, that program, and I've been over there, so I was truly impressed, it is the future of education, the way they are moving. It's not going to happen tomorrow for most places, but it's something we should be using as a model, and we should be allowing kids those opportunities. They're never going to get that chance again.
See, I would expand on it even further. I mean, I think, because that's a center of excellence over there, I think a lot of the school districts should have their own little centers of excellence and have exchanges between other schools. We can do it for Tech Valley, we can do it between Voorheesville and Bethlehem and Mohanesson and Niskiuna, so that, you know, if we wanted to have, like, a center for German languages, they're all going to Niskiuna, for example. French over at Chalma, I mean, it doesn't really matter. I mean, you can have centers of excellence and be sharing in all those costs, much the same way you do with BOSI's. Again, it's kind of revolutionary from like what we're accustomed to, which is the school system of the 1700s when we were an agricultural society, which we are no longer. We've gone through at least two revolutions, and we haven't stepped one bit off of the agricultural model in education.
So the one year, I think it was like 20 kids, if 20 kids wanted to go, you would send all 20 kids to Tech Valley?
I don't, wanting to go and then being, you know, recommended, and I don't know what the process is now, but.
So let's say there was 20 kids.
I don't know if Tech Valley could take 20 kids of ours, I mean, because they're servicing a number of school districts, so they may have difficulty.
We'd have to make a decision then.
Yeah, we have, at least we have an opportunity here to allow another child who could benefit from this, would never get that chance.
Plus, I'd add, why don't you go back and negotiate? Say, we'll take two years free and pay the last two. Since Chris says it's marketing, let's negotiate with them.
We have four kids, we'll take, you take four in return.
Is this something you would vote on at a later meeting?
Well, no, they need to know. I mean, I know we're outside of the practice here, but this came at the last minute, so we have a, we have a potential student who needs to be informed if.
If they're going to go.
If they can go.
We're going to go around, we have to suspend rules again.
It would be by lottery, right? Of the four students every male?
It would be the next runner-up. So there, you know, there was runner-up, and they're in order that they were pulled from the lottery. So we would ask the next person, and if that person decided they didn't want to go for some reason, or had already made up their mind they were okay coming here, we'd go to the next person. But we'd just work our way through the list.
I have no problem, you know, supporting that student, but what I would like to see is a follow-up of the probably nine or 10 that we've sent there now. What was the outcome? I know one kid dropped out, but did they go on to college? Did they go on to military? Did they go on to a career or whatever?
And I think we've had students that we've sent to Tech Valley come to our meetings to present, and I remember being very impressed with what they've done. Like Gloria, I've spent a fair amount of time there, and it is an impressive place. It's not a perfect fit for every student, but the students that seem to be attracted to it really thrive there, and so.
Or the kids for whom it works.
Uh-huh. So I would support it as well. So I guess we would need a motion to suspend the rules.
Before we do that, we ought to just walk around the table and see if we have consensus around this.
Okay. Barbara, you seem to be in favor of it. Judy? Gloria? I would be in favor of it. Chris?
I have concerns.
Concerns? Teresa?
I'd be in favor of it.
Okay, in favor. Alan? Seema? Kathy?
I'm in favor.
Okay, so can we have a motion to suspend the rules to vote on sending additional students to Tech Valley High School? Alan, second. Kathy? Okay, and now we need a motion to approve sending.
First we have to vote on the motion.
Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor of suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes nine-zero. And now we need a motion to approve sending the additional students to Tech Valley. Barbara, second. Gloria? Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, passes nine-zero. Thank you, Marie.
Thank you.
And now we will move on to board president information, and this is following up on a conversation we started at the last meeting related to high school class, the high school class ranking policy. We were given some material, and I hope everybody had a time to go through it. So I will open the discussion to whoever would like to start it. Okay, well, I've read the materials.
I've read them too.
It seemed like most of the data that was provided kind of pointed to elimination of the class ranking and that more than half of the high schools in the United States are, in the United States now, no longer rank students. I don't have any concerns about changing the policy. Seema?
I think, I said this last time when it came up, that if it forces the college to look at the student's application package, you know, look at other materials, and it gives them, I guess, less reason to dismiss a student because of a number, then I'm for that. And I think the students who made a case, you know, for getting rid of class rank had a good, you had a good point.
Chris?
The only thing I was saying is that I hope that we take this and then make a broader discussion, which is about grades and about even the Board of Ed awards. And I know, like, a lot of kids got out of the middle school, you know, over a third of the class or whatever the number was. And, you know, the number of kids that now sit on the graduation stage, you know, when that used to be an exclusive piece. You know, soon I was joking that there'd be more people on the stage and off the stage, but, you know, just have a broader discussion, you know, even like when we're talking about the Board of Ed awards, is that something that we, is that, is that how we should present the award, anyone above a 95? Or is there something, a better way of doing it? You know, is there something more important than a grade? Instead of giving it out to 400 kids, is there something we can do where you shine a light on one or two kids and maybe make that more meaningful? So I hope we have a broader discussion after this type of stuff.
I agree. Alan?
I'm kind of puzzled why we would want to do this. And the reason I am puzzled by it is, to me, it would go off naturally if the colleges just took it off themselves. Why are we advocating something that they may or may not use as a replacement of a college student? I just don't understand why we want to do that. I mean, it's, it's like when you're going to borrow a loan. I'm not going to let you use my FICA score to judge my credit. The bank, the bank is the one who makes the ultimate decision, so why aren't we letting the universities use whatever criteria they want?
They don't require it.
They don't.
Then, then it's, then you don't have to do anything with it.
Right, but if we're giving them extra information that they don't, you know, they don't need.
And I misinterpreted it, this chart here, it says that this is what all the colleges look at in the order in which they put importance on it, then.
Right, they look at that, but that doesn't mean all of those things are required for every school. I think that one slide that, you know, shows the difference between number one and number 10 in the rank and the difference in decimal places is, I mean, that just speaks volumes right there. And, you know, if a school has some blanket statement that they're going to eliminate the top, I don't know, 10% of students by a number, but you look at number one and number 10 here, and they're off by a small decimal place, then that student would get cut out when, I just think that would be, I don't see how that would serve a student well. I don't see why that would be.
I don't either.
Kathy?
I'm a little, I guess now they have weighted GPAs for certain classes. Does that mean that depending on which classes a student takes, they would have a higher average than a student who takes different classes? I'm a little bit confused by that, because that wasn't the case when my kids went through, so, and I don't, I didn't see any information about weighted averages in this, in this material, so I don't know if that makes a difference or, because if a college is looking just at GPA, does that already factor in that the student took advanced classes?
Yeah, the students could correct me if I'm wrong, but you see both grades, right, averages, you see weighted and then there's an unweighted average. So there's two averages that you're shown on your transcript. The weighted one takes into effect the level of the courses.
So when it comes to class rank, do they, were they using the weighted averages or the unweighted averages?
I don't believe so. I think, Tom can answer that, but.
I think Tom should.
Let him. Yeah, I think they were using just the general GPA.
I just find the whole thing a little bit confusing.
Right, so for all school functions, we use an unweighted average. So as Mr. McManus, that it's sitting on stage, honor roll, things like that, we use an unweighted GPA. And there are numerous reasons why Cabinet felt that was important. They feel that students who aren't taking some of those challenging classes still may be taking challenging classes for them. And traditionally, that's what we had done before we had weighting. However, there was a groundswell a few years ago from some parents who indicated that their children were applying for certain scholarships, and the scholarships were asking for a weighted grade based upon, you know, class strength that they took. So building Cabinet got together, and they said, well, we have the ability to show both. And as long as we maintain school as non-weighted for some of those, or all of those internal things, parents would then have the freedom and students would have the freedom to use that weighted grade to apply for certain scholarships and use it for that.
Okay, so the class rank that they're, that they're talking about eliminating, that's all unweighted grade point averages that, in which you would use to actually rank students numerically?
Correct. We're, we are not talking about getting rid of GPA. The GPA would still be there. We do currently rank students based upon the non-weighted GPA.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Were there any other questions for Tom before he gets back to?
I don't know if maybe Marie can answer it, but how do you weight a GPA anyway? Like, I know, like, when I graduated college, I liked to use my major GPA because that was higher than my regular GPA. So how?
The courses are, the courses are weighted, so.
But that's what I mean, like, so if you took an advanced science course versus a regular science course.
Tom, what's the metric that we use to weight? I don't want to misspeak.
Like, you multiply that number times another number to weight it?
Yeah.
And is that across the board?
Honors are at 1.02, and AP, college level, anything college level, Supa, things along those lines, are 1.04. Weight, it's similar to what some other schools that do weighting do in the area.
So there is like a standard that's used? Gilderlin uses the same as, like, Bethlehem or?
Chen.
Chris?
The only other comment I meant to say, and I said this in the meeting, was that my understanding is in the high school, there's one particular class that's very competitive. And even if you get rid of class rank, I think they're still going to be very competitive because you have GPA. And I understand, you know, you can get rid of this, but I still think that that's still going to be shown with the competitive nature and trying to get a higher GPA.
Okay.
Last question on this topic. What's the pros and cons?
I think the pros are indicated, it's.
They have a rationale.
Yeah, but what are the cons?
The cons are what I think.
The cons would be getting eliminated, like I said, if, you know, they're looking at, you know, the college is a business too, so they're looking for ways to, you know, get all these applications and get rid of, you know, not looking at all of them. So here's an extra number where it could just hurt a student by having additional information there that they don't have. But from what I understood in that meeting, that if someone requested that, they could get it from the school, from the high school.
But there are people that are against this idea, and I think, we're not voting on anything tonight unless we're going to suspend rules again, but at the next meeting, have actual people come forward and explain why, why they don't agree with this.
I think, don't we have, don't we have a student here this evening that participated on the committee in some of these discussions? I'm wondering if there's anybody that would like to come up and weigh in on this issue?
I didn't think Jonah was here.
Yeah, Jonah's right there.
Oh, okay.
They're both there.
Don't feel obligated, only.
You listened to us for an hour and a half, you deserve.
Jonah in Fabronia were on the, are on the Cabinet, who spent the entire year, as I understand, discussing this, so. I think pros and cons are kind of what.
Okay, so we spent a lot of time surveying the student population and seeing what them, like, what the mentality is if we, like, a hypothetical situation where we to remove the ranking of each student. And mostly it was, the pros were a lot of things like choosing more high, more high-level classes, because people weren't afraid that choosing a higher-level class with the risk of getting a lower grade would drop their rank. So that was a definite pro, because it would cause students to challenge themselves and see what limits they could kind of push beyond for themselves. And then another thing was that it, it was more of like on a qualitative level. The students talked about kind of raising their personal self-esteem and confidence because it wasn't like this, this one number or this one standing among 400 other students and kind of competing with other students. And, you know, it's like the difference between one and two could be staying home because you were sick for one day, because the difference is so small. So that was also another positive. Originally, students were concerned about, one student brought up the concern that, you know, I'm a junior now and I've been working throughout the past three years with this kind of goal of having a good class rank, and what if that is taken away from me? So that was a concern about kind of having that sudden change in the way things work. But it was agreed upon, based upon the survey results, which I think are in the material that we provided, that it would be more beneficial, although it does cause, does entail some transition time, it would be more beneficial in the long run because then it would, the class rank really only benefits, like, maybe the top 10%, and even then, the differences could be, I know, like personally earth-shattering to some people. But it definitely, despite the transition time and despite the different concerns that were raised concerning the way things were always done and how that change would be implemented, it was definitely considered to be a positive in the long run. Other concerns were things about scholarships. So many scholarships require you to submit some kind of rank or some kind of indication of where you're at in your class, whether it's the top 10% or a certain number where you have to be above maybe like the 50 mark. But we kind of been communicating with counseling, the Counseling Center, and one of our counselors, Mrs. Murphy, she did mention that there's a way where we can only provide the rank if a student was applying to a scholarship. And she said that most scholarship committees only require a decile rank, not a, not a, like, definitive numerical rank. So that would still eliminate the actual rank that students would be provided. If you want to add anything, Jen?
I think to your point, Mr. McManus, about the competition. Obviously, we found that not all competition would go away, but some of the other reasons found that not all competition would go away, but some of the other reasons that we were doing this in the first place, we thought, um, were as important, if not more important, than, you know, lessening competition. And one of the ones that struck me the most was how, um, that mentioned, um, Ms. Murphy, one of our counselors contacted different schools in the area, and I believe it was Siena that said, um, they calculate merit scholarships based on rank and GPA. So let's say a student has a, a high GPA, let's say a 90, but at Gilderlin, that could mean you're in the middle or bottom half of all students, so your rank would look not as good. So you could lose, that family could lose money in scholarships, which could be, you know, hurtful to our community, and that was more of a, um, a tangible factor in why we wanted to eliminate ranking, so, things like that, and as well what, um, Ms. Rivera mentioned about, um, about in admissions, kids can be looked at more holistically if they don't have rank, and that was some of the reasons that Bethlehem and Iskuna got rid of it, um, some years ago.
Was there any discussion about, um, phasing it in? I know, when you mentioned those students that might have worked really hard for these three years and now, it will be a small percentage of them, but to take it away, was there any discussion about starting, you know, next year with the incoming freshman and just not doing it, and why was that taken off the table?
Well, we discussed this in Cabinet, and, um, we decided to, that it would be most beneficial to implement it for next year, um, for all classes, um, because really, the idea that kids have been working for it for four years isn't exactly correct, because we don't see our rank till, um, our senior year, so rank doesn't really exist for any students until their senior year, so all those classes that aren't seniors yet would benefit, um, more, you know, most kids would benefit from not having a rank, especially since so many of our kids are, you know, obviously not in the top 10%. Now, obviously, some kids might think that they could be losing something, but really, nobody knows if they're in the top 10%, or if they're number one or number two until they get that senior year, so it was the administration and, um, all other stakeholders' representatives', uh, decision that next year would, for all classes, would be most beneficial.
And additionally, it's, it's kind of like a matter of why wait? If we can do something to improve, um, students' academic experience at the high school from now, then, because there's always gonna be some kind of transition period and some kind of, um, those, like, transition troubles, um, when, whenever you implement it, whether you implement it with freshmen or with, um, people who are gonna be seniors in the future. So it's, uh, we figure that if there's a way that we can kind of get students to pay attention to the larger picture and not be so focused upon that, um, single number, then why should we wait to do so?
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. I didn't realize they didn't know until their senior year. Does anybody have any questions?
So your ranking is just for your senior year? That's, it takes your year's worth of work, or is it your four years?
All four years, but you don't know until-
You don't know.
You don't know until that.
Yeah.
Up until the, I think, uh, Mr. Le- Yeah, so three and three-quarters, um, of the year, but even when we get it in senior year, it's in the beginning of the year, so it's always subject to change depending on, um, whatever happens.
How your grades fluctuate.
And, and what would happen if a university or college asks for your ranking and you don't have one anymore?
Well, the school would just say that we do not publish rank.
So in our-
What would happen with, like, with a scholarship? Like you were saying, Siena does that.
So for a school, we would say that, um, that we do not rank, so that would go in our school profile, so, right now, we describe our rank there, and, um, like other schools, we got in touch with Iskuna about how they present it in their school profile, and we would just say that we do not rank, so then Siena would not include that, um. We've called a number of admissions offices and asked, you know, could kids be penalized if they don't have admission, if they don't have rank on their, um, admissions, and there was not one that said that kids would be hurt, because so many schools, as I think Ms. Hayes said, um, no longer rank, so they can't really penalize over 50% of US applicants.
Alan?
I guess I found the most telling thing is the, the scholarship part that you had with Siena. So if you, if we do eliminate the rank or a school, a kid applies where the school doesn't rank, what, what criteria do they have? Just the GPA, or do they add another criteria? So they have two criteria to look at?
So if it's a scholarship that's based upon, um, academic achievement, um, they would most likely use the GPA or, um, the level of courses that the student took. Um, but besides that, because I think to some degree, we can consider GPA and rank to be some kind of, um, have some kind of dependency upon each other, so, um, it, based on, uh, all the interviews that Jonah did with the different, um, and the surveys that he sent out to, to the different institutions, it seems that, that there wasn't really a problem for them to use GPA instead of rank.
Okay, so to paraphrase what you just said, so I kinda understand it, is, in the Siena example, if we didn't have ranking, the only criteria they would use would be the GPA, and, and therefore, the ranking wouldn't count as a, couldn't count as a potential negative, because it would be the GPA, right?
Absolutely, yeah. They said that they would double up the, the GPA, so rather than doing GPA and rank, they would just do GPA twice, so often that would help all students.
Yeah, the way Mrs. Murphy described it was, it's almost as if, like, if a, a certain rank could get you a certain number of points, and a certain GPA can also get you a certain number of points, so instead of using the, the value from the, uh, rank, they would just use the G, the val- the point value from the GPA twice.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. I really appreciate all of the insight and feedback, and all of the hard work that you've done.
Staying late.
Okay.
And if you see the school, the, where the students are going from Iskuna and Bethlehem, some of the top schools, obviously, it's not hurting those students. If you look at the list, I mean, Harvard, I mean, you know.
Is this an action item then, next time?
Yep.
That was gonna be my next question. So is this an elimination of a policy or a modification of the policy?
Well, we don't have it here, but we, they did modify the policy. Next time, we could look at the policy.
So we can bring in the modified policy for a first read, and then you can waive the rules if you want on July 5th.
I, I think that, just a question for everyone to think about is the date. I know the board talked about that for a while, too.
Is there sentiment, though, to implement? It seems like, what I'm hearing is that people are in favor of the students' position, but is there agreement or plot to implement it next year immediately, or a phase in period?
No, I'm hoping to.
Said in the information.
Is it doable, Tom? I guess?
Yeah, it's cool.
Okay.
Do you think that some students will think that's unfair? I know there's, the, the kids that really care about it. I just don't wanna vote, and then parents come complain, and we're gonna revote and then vote against it.
No, we're not.
That's what I'm saying, we haven't heard any negatives.
We have, I mean, we-
No, but it'd be nice to have it, more information out there, so more people are aware of what we intend to do or what we're considering doing, so that if there are concerns, they would have an opportunity to come forward.
Yeah.
And if they don't, then we can say, "Well, you had noticed that this was..."
Well, is it possible to, possible to set up a, the notifier to the high school parents that are on, on the list and say, "This is a matter of discussion, that will be before the board if you have any thoughts," uh, and maybe post the students' work here on our website and say, you know, "Take a look, and the board is looking for feedback."
Or do it and explain why.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think last time they, I don't know if it was the students or somebody mentioned, the communication piece would be important regardless of how that hap- you know, if it's before or after, but I wouldn't want to, you know, wait too long, because we're getting, you know, waiting and waiting for people's, uh, for people in the community to respond, and maybe we hear from one person who, you know, is not interested, and where were they all along then? It sounds like they've been working on this all year.
But it's-
But again, it's limited. It's just building cabinet, one or two parents and, and the kids.
But Cabinet includes parents.
Right.
And were parents in favor and-
I think, I think, because it's such a, a big piece, I think this is a big piece of our education, I think it would be really wise to do like an SNN informing, informing families that we're going to be voting on this, 'cause a lot of families don't know what's on the agenda. They might get the SNN saying, "This is the agenda," but if you make it a known thing that we are gonna be voting on this, on this, at this board meeting, if you have any concerns, please feel free to come and, come to the public hearing prior to the meeting.
Concerns or support, or, you know, so-
I'm pretty sure Elizabeth Floyd Mayer is watching, so I have a good sense that there will be an article next week, 'cause today's already, well, today's Tuesday, so...
Or, or the weekend, but still in time.
Prior to any time, we would do a vote, but we can also do our own communication.
I think just a simple SNN would be enough.
Yeah, I would still-
Yeah, absolutely. I'll work with Aubrey, too.
Something ourselves, yeah.
And could we, in the SNN, link them to the information?
Yes, we would put all this on our website, so people can look at that, and then we'll give them the phone numbers of our three scholars back there. You did such a great job. All right, we can do all those things.
I think that, thank you.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the action items, school business management action. Neil?
Yes. First item this evening is the, um, bond resolution for the purchase of school buses and our maintenance vehicles that were approved by the voters on May 16th. The bond resolution authorized, uh, serial bonds to be issued in the amount not exceeding $1,071,500. We do need a roll call vote, and two-thirds of the board will have to vote yes in order for it to pass.
Okay, um, so can I have a motion to approve the bond resolution authorizing the purchase of various school buses and vehicles? Judy, second, Gloria, okay? Are, if there are-
One question. More from a procedural thing. Since the vote is already approved, this, why does the board have to vote on it?
Because this is the financing part, so they approved, they authorized the purchase, now the board has to authorize the financing.
So that vote isn't to authorize the bonding of it, too?
Pardon?
The vote, that the public doesn't, doesn't also authorize the bonding of it?
They don't have the financial authority to commit resources, so the board does, so that's the second piece.
Okay, all right. Good to know, didn't I?
Okay, so if there's no other questions or comments, I'll turn it to Linda for the roll call.
Mrs. Barber?
Yes.
Mrs. Federico?
Yes.
Mrs. Jeter?
Yes.
Mrs. Hayes?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Simpson?
Yes.
Mrs. Slack?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, with you, Christine, I, um, we have one topic, which is the annual risk assessment and the special area audit, those are two different reports, but if it's possible, I'd like to talk about one, and then talk about the other, and then have the board approve.
Both of them together?
If that's okay.
Sure.
Okay. All right, so we'll start with the annual risk assessment report that was provided to you. The audit committee has reviewed that, met with, um, the internal auditors, that's Quest R3 BOCs, and basically, this is an annual financial risk assessment, so they're looking at areas of potential risk and making recommendations to improve our, our procedures to help mitigate that risk. So I'll walk through some of the recommendations that are contained in the report and what the district's response would be to those. So they identified, uh, three recommendations to address risk. The first one was that the claims auditor attend a formal refresher training. Uh, we would agree with that, there's various organizations that offer that, so we're going to look at who's, who we're able to contract with for that training. Our plan is to do that before September 30th of 2017. The second recommendation was that, was to utilize an inventory, inventory control forms with extra classroom clubs. Uh, again, we would agree with that, uh, there is a form available from the New York State Education Department. Quest R3 actually does our training with club advisors each year, so as part of that training, we'll talk about implementing the form, how it would be used, and emphasizing the need to make sure that we account for all supplies, and also a little training on how to use the form itself. And again, we're looking at doing, completing that task by the end of September. The third recommendation was for the transportation department to perform a physical inventory for parts and supplies. Again, we're agreeing with that, we have a plan in place that will hopefully have that done over the summer, preferably during July, and reporting out by that by the start of September. So those are the three recommendations, and those are the three responses for each of those areas of, of risk. And I'll take any questions on any part of that.
I'm just gonna comment for you. The other part, though, A, was the, the report that the auditor sent, and on that report, it also has some of the prior, uh, recommendations and whether the comments have been cleared or not, I just wanna make sure that everybody's aware.
Yeah.
We don't have any open outstanding issues, but it's important to note that, that report, I don't know how far back it goes, but there's-
Several years.
Pretty old comments on there that, but the point is, they've all been cleared, and what I don't know is if they ever go back and revisit some of them. I'm assuming they do, 'cause they're on that report, but I don't know.
What, what the auditors did share with us is, we were told we were the only client that had closed all of their previous, uh, comments, so, school district to do that.
Right. Seema?
Um, the, uh, the risks that they mentioned in the, in the report, are these, like, typical for school districts?
Yes, uh, very common in terms, it's really geared towards school districts, so the type of transactions that we do, the areas that we have, you know, things like maintenance and transportation, food service, the functions that we have, so they're looking at it very specifically in terms of the operations of a school district, and what are the risks, and then how best to mitigate that risk.
Are there any other questions on the annual risk assessment?
Okay. Uh, the second one was related to a special area audit, was regarding our most recent capital project, and that was our 18.5 million dollar capital project where we did improvements at each of our school buildings and maintenance building, transportation as well. Uh, there were four observations and recommendations, so similar to the financial risk assessment, I'll go through those recommendations and the district's response. Uh, the first recommendation was the district should verify if change orders and allowances are charged to the correct SED contract before making a payment, and then in addition, allowances that are approved for payment need to be reviewed thoroughly to ensure the district is not being charged for overhead and profit. So basically, in terms of the first item, which was making sure they're charged to the correct contract, we had a unique situation with this particular project, there were two phases of work. We did an initial bid for the majority of the work, and then we did a second bid a year later for other portions of the work. The construction schedule overlapped, so we're doing work from Phase 1 in the second summer, the most recent summer, we're also doing work from what we call Phase 2 the second summer as well. We bid each of those phases of work out separately, and we had awarded the general construction contract for the first phase to a contractor who also was the low bidder in the second phase. So we had the same contractor performing work in the same buildings at the same time on multiple phases, so what happened is, we had, uh, basically a change order, which was a change in the nature of the work, that was awarded, and unfortunately, it was inadvertently coded to the Phase 1 project, when it should've been coded to the Phase 2 project, so it still went to the same, to the right vendor, everything worked out fine, but it did get coded to the wrong project. So that's something, it's a little bit unusual to have the same vendor do multiple phases of work and have them occur simultaneously, does create the opportunity, but, uh, again, our response is certainly working with our architect and construction manager, we'll try to make sure they are diligent in making sure that the construction expenses are charged to the correct project. Uh, the second item was, um, an issue with overhead and profit, and again, this is with, um, work for allowances, which is work that's, or costs that are included in the bid for occurrences that may happen during the project. So you open up a wall and find something that you didn't expect, but rather than having to go out and get quotes and, and bid the work, you can, at the time of bid, ask the contractor to give you pricing on particular aspects of the work, and that reduces some of the costs, uh, in order to do so, so it's a cost-saving measure. There was some dispute on the way these two payments worked from our construction management firm, they felt that what's called overhead and profit for the work that was done was appropriate, um, auditors disputed that, we actually went back to our attorney who agreed with the auditor, so we had to go back and collect some money, and we did get back $55.65 from, from one contractor and $458.61 from a second contractor. Uh, but again, uh, the issue there is that we just have to work closer with our, our paid professionals, construction manager and architects, to make sure that they're following all of the requirements of the contract and making those interpretations correctly. Second item was that the district should admit, submit allowances to facilities planning, which is the division of New York State Education Department that oversees construction projects, in the same manner as, as change orders, which means that there's a, a paperwork process for that. So change orders are, are work that's additional work, that's not intended to be part of the original project, we have to, that has to be submitted separately and approved by the State Education Department. So the allowances that are referred to before are a different process, where you already have money embedded in the contract. According to a newsletter that was issued some time ago, the state said that all allowances should follow the same process as change orders. So our response is, going forward, we will, we will do that, our architects did that in this particular project, they did it toward the end of the project rather than the beginning or as they occurred, but all of those got submitted in, in the appropriate fashion. There was another recommendation that minimum requirements provided by the State Education Department is the district should not exceed the 5% allowance threshold, and basically, that's based off the contract, so if you're going to have an allowance balance tied with contract, it shouldn't exceed 5% of the total projected cost. Some, in some cases, we did have allowances that exceeded that. Again, the recommendation is when we do our next project, we'll again work with our construction management firm to make sure that they're adhering to those guidelines. Third recommendation was that the claims auditor should confirm that purchase orders cumulative expenditures to date do not exceed the blanket purchase order amount, and if they do exceed that amount, claims auditor should reject the payment until there's sufficient explanation. And basically, this is an issue with the claims auditor's access to our computerized financial reporting system, and we have since made adjustments though, so that she has the ability to go in and look in the computerized system to compare the cost and make sure that no purchase order is exceeding the value when she looks at it on, on the computer The last recommendation is that the district should include a right to audit clause in the contract agreements. We, in our responses, we checked with our attorney, they asked us to check this with the attorney, who is of the opinion that the district already holds the legal authority to audit contract agreements related to capital projects absent any specific contractual language, but again, he was not opposed to including this requirement in future capital project contracts, so we will add that in the future as well.
Any questions for Neil related to the special area audit? Okay. If there are no questions, then we will need a motion to accept the annual risk assessment report and the special area audit. Alan, second. Teresa. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. Thank you, Neil.
You're welcome. Next, we have two service agreements. One is for Music Speaks, and the second is for Oak Hill Schools. These are both programs for students with disabilities, and they're contracts that will provide services through the summer and next school year.
May I have a motion to approve the two service agreements? Judy, second. Barbara. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero.
Next item is general fund transfers, so we have transfers to approve totaling $258,883.36. I know Alan had some questions too, about where they appear in the expenditure report, so I don't know if we want to try to accomplish two motions or one motion, but the, the discussion will tie together.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
What's, do you want to do it as one motion? Okay.
The only thing that I would question is, is Chris also had questions about this, so.
Yeah, we'll do-
Check the fund balance, so that's gotta be-
That'll be the next item.
That'll be next after this?
Yes.
Okay. Make sure we don't skip over that.
Right. Okay, so I, I can talk a little bit about the general fund transfer. So what you have before you are functional areas of the budget, that's in the from column, and you'll see a four-digit code there, that's the New York State Education Department coding system for school districts. So just, for example, the very first one, it's a functional area that we're taking money from is 9731, which is construction and bond anticipation, no interest is, is the area. We're taking $95,000 and we're transferring it to what's referred to as the 1621 code, which is maintenance. So if you were to look back at the report, the expenditure report, I think it's easier to work backwards since we'll see where the money is coming from. 9731 is on page seven of eight of that report, and in the second column, there's an adjustment column, and you'll see a subtraction of $191,632. So that is money that has been taken out of that original budget amount of $618,405 and transferred to other locations. So now, if we go down to 1621, which is on page-
Actually, answer my question, so now I have a follow-up question.
Okay.
Since we have this report, and we haven't approved the budget transfers, how can this report, how can you issue the report without the approval of?
But we would, it's, the question here is how do you demonstrate and, and show it versus how do you authorize it? So if you didn't approve those, we would reverse them back out again. But it's, it was a way for us to demonstrate, here's where you can make the associations between how the transfers would work or not. We could do it in the other way, you just wouldn't be able to see at all how the transfers-
I'm okay with it, I guess I would probably put in there, resolve that the board approved budgetary transfers for the period of May 2000, May 2017, because that's the period you're recording those transfers, because when you read the business activity, I assume that you were making them out of the available column and they weren't part of the adjustments, because every month, at least most months, I've seen small amounts in the adjustment, which brings me, my next question is, you know, at what dollar threshold do you bring it to the board for them to approve the transfer?
It's really out of functional areas, so when we start crossing functional areas of the budget, that's when we need the board approval. If they're within the same function, so we're within the maintenance area, we can move money within the maintenance area. Once we start falling outside of the maintenance area and going to other functional areas, that's when we need to bring it to the board.
Okay, that's also good to know, because I didn't know that. Okay, you answered all my questions, I, again, I was just, I didn't understand the logistics, how it worked, that's all I wanted to have explained.
Okay. So we will need a motion to approve the general fund transfers as well as the expense reports, which were originally listed on the consent agenda, section D2. Barbara, second. Alan, any other questions or comments?
The only comment I would make is, like I did when I was at the, meet the candidates night, I, I think it's important to have a little general discussion when we go over these reports. Maybe you don't need to do it every month, but I think once a quarter, you should have some general discussion amongst the board about where we are and some of the things that we see going on in the actual numbers that are coming through versus the numbers that we budgeted, just, because that'll add some flavor to when you're doing your, your budget development. I know we've been here seven years and we've done it, never done it that way, but really would advocate that rather than make that be a consent item, I, I think once a quarter, you should, again, it would warrant a 10-minute discussion and maybe a little presentation by Neil, much the same like Damian does with the information on a lot of things that happen with the kids in school, because it's important. I think one of us would find it very interesting. Huh?
One of us would find it very interesting.
I think it would be very enlightening when you go to do the budget.
Great.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. Neil, one more item?
Yep, the projected fund balance report. Chris, I think you had some questions?
This is smart, you wait so long that I have to now remember my questions.
All right, let's take the vote.
Remember, you had a choice. You said defer.
Well, I just thought we were gonna talk about next, not, but, um, just quick questions. I know it was the last meeting, was it Moody's that we talked about, the, the rating, and they, they said that we needed even more of fund balance? And so when you went to the rating agency, was, was the fund balance number inclusive of this amount? Or did you?
Yeah, they look at a multi, they look at past and they ask us what we're projecting in the current year. So they have our financials, our audited financial statements from, from prior years, so that's a factor in, in the discussion. And then they are also asking us, what are the factors that are occurring now, where do you see yourself being at the end of the year in terms of fund balance, the projection of that, how's the town doing, you know, tax group base growth and all of those other factors? So we talk about all of the factors that we see going forward at the time we're having the conversation with the rating agency, which occurred a few weeks ago.
But I guess specifically, when they said to you, or said to Gilderland that, you know, your fund balance should be higher, were they saying it should be higher than, it looks like 6.5 million?
Oh, yes, they would, well, and they, they put fund balance and reserves are kind of all in a category for them, so they're not distinguishing between fund balance and reserves. Point of a ratings agi-agency is something, somebody like Moody's, they're rating our bonds, so they're telling investors, how are the issuer's ability to pay, repay the loan? So if you lend them money, what's their ability to repay? And it's no different than getting a mortgage or anything else, car loan. People are gonna look at you and say, what is your income, what kind of expenses do you have, and what's the risk of you defaulting on a loan? And, you know, do you have the resources to pay the money back or not? So from the rating agency point of view, they're always going to want to see as much money in our savings account as you can possibly have, much likely do with individuals. So they're always going to look at this, and, and they basically said, you know, for the type of business that you are in, we would like to see you have more money on hand available in, in reserves and fund balance, and if you're able to do that, we would actually increase your bond rating, making it more attractive to investors. That would in turn result in a lower rate when you go out to borrow, saving you money there. So it's always this, this back and forth, you know, putting money away, is it good? But there's always a limit to how much money you should put away.
Right.
Rating agencies like it, taxpayers maybe not so much, so it's kind of that delicate balance of where's the right mix?
I just think that's important, because now that we have that piece where we can transfer next year's fund balance, that, was there a sense, if it's 6.5, what they would consider enough?
No, we didn't, they wouldn't come out and commit to that, they do everything committee, so we're talking with an analyst that's basically around the, around the phone.
They usually have formulas and stuff like that, is there anything that would indicate, because that's what you really have to then, next year, we would have to look at, is, you know, if there was a fund balance, you transfer it to the piece that we said, or do you leave it, and therefore you might get a better credit, credit rating?
Well, we can't leave it because we'll exceed the 4%, so we have to move it to a reserve, and the capital reserve is, is the one that we talked about.
So when Moody's looks at it, would they include the capital reserve amount with that piece?
Yes. They used, actually, they used the term reserves and fund balance interchangeably in the report, we pointed that out to them, but to them, it's all the same thing, it's, it's money beyond your operating needs.
So, last question, if, if we had that capital reserve piece now, how much of this could we have transferred to the capital reserve?
Theoretically, the way it's structured right now, is as much as you want.
Okay.
There is, up to the $10 million limit, obviously, but it's whatever we have in terms of a balance at the end of the year. Theoretically, it could all go in there, and we're looking at $2.3 million right now.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Alan?
Real question really is, is when you put it in the balance, in the reserve, and it comes time to use it, how does that impact your tax rate for the, the bonds? How much money would you, actually, how does it impact your state aid formula? Because your capital improvements are aidable, so if that comes off the top, and it's not part of the, the aiding, then it kind of hurts you to have a capital reserve. If it's, if it's the net number where you get to take the benefit from it, you get, you know, dollar for dollar bank.
The source of funding doesn't matter, so you're getting aided on eligible projects, so whether you pay cash or whether you're using borrowed money, it doesn't really matter, it won't affect your aid on, on the project.
So by putting it in the capital fund, you're actually deferring your tax, any tax increase or offsetting it?
Right, it'll be lower, we'll have less long-term debt expenses as a result of being able to use cash on hand, we'll have less borrowing expense.
It won't cause an issue next year? That'd be a question.
Well, it will always cause an issue, because again, you, the, that resolution was for $10 million, and it expires, and I, I don't remember the technical, how many years it's good for, but-
Ten years.
Ten years, so you mean you have to use it within that 10-year period.
Right.
It has to be for specific cap, for, I believe for specific capital projects, you just can't go in and-
Right, has to be for capital construction.
Take it out, you can't, it's not like going to your savings account, you can't deposit it and say, oh god, next year I need, I need a new tractor, I'm gonna take it out and go buy a new tractor. It's, 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 once you put it in there, it's there, unless you go to bond a capital project.
Right.
So I understand, am I right?
Correct, and that's the way, all the reserves are set up the same way, they're for a particular purpose, so whether it's tax surgeries or workers' compensation costs, they can only be used for that purpose.
It's good, it's a good thing.
Mm-hmm.
Except for if you go through a downturn and you, you need your, your fund balance, and you know, that's, that's not accessible for that. The 4% is really kind of outdated, you, they really need to have more, more in line with what's going on, just by the mere fact that the, the controller's office has two scales, one, if you're over 4%, they ding you, and if you're under 4%, they come on rate you and put you at a, a, a district at risk. I mean, you can't win. The cards are always stacked against you, so you, you're in a no-win situation.
What I like is that you can eventually give a benefit back to the taxpayer.
They could have done that this year.
But if you did that, then you would be hurting the school district in the next year's budget because of how that would be counted towards the different.
Right, or you, no one says you had to give back all of it, you could have been generous and put some in capital and some back in your taxpayers' money. We opted not to do that.
Okay, if there are no other questions or comments, we need a motion to approve the fund balance report, which was originally item D6 on the consent agenda. Judy, second. Kathy? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes nine zero. Thank you, Neil.
You're welcome.
Next, we move on to board president action items, in which there is one this evening, and that is approval of the superintendent's 2016-17 evaluation and contract extension, and I believe all of you have in front of you the resolution. So may I have a motion to approve the resolution? Gloria, second. Judy, are there any questions or comments?
The only thing I would comment is, I, I think we should basically tell her that we're gonna extend it for the one year as she's requested, and what the increase might be, since we've already talked about it and agreed on it, don't you?
Sure, is that our normal practice?
It's not normal, but.
It's normal.
Okay, if, if that's permissible, sure.
I would just read what it's-
I'm just saying, we just read it out so everybody knows.
Okay, sure. "Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Gilderland Central School District hereby extends the contract effective July 1st, 2017 of Dr. Marie Wiles, the Superintendent of Schools, to June 12th, 2022, and approves the amendment to the existing employment agreement amended on June 13th, 2017, setting forth the terms and conditions of Dr. Wiles' employment and authorizes payment thereunder." Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes nine zero. Thank you.
Exactly.
Next item on the agenda is board committee reports, audit. Alan?
Man, on June 6th, we covered every single item that we talked about, which was the reports that we had lengthy discussion on, plus the claims auditor's report that was in the consent agenda. We have one open item that we're trying to resolve, which is the claims auditor asked us to look at her salary and come up with a potential increase in the way we pay. We were tentatively scheduled to do it last week, but something came up where we all couldn't be, we're tentatively trying to schedule it, what is it, June 20, June 26th?
27th or 28th.
So hopefully, we'll be able to resolve that, but like I, as I said before, if we're not able to, you know, we're gonna, it's not because we didn't try and it's not because we don't want to talk here.
Thank you, Alan. Business practices, Gloria?
We haven't covered any of these.
Congratulations, Alan.
We have four items on our agenda. The first item was our handbook, our new board member handbook, and that we're all working on, right?
I think it's done.
Yes.
Okay. It's being cleaned up and-
Good, so we'll have a draft to pilot with our new board member. It's gonna be our first one. Also, we discussed facility use fees. As you remember, this came up before, the committee discussed a request to use a number of our district facilities at the high school for the Capital Region Makabi Games to be held the second week of August this year. The committee recommends that the fee for allowing our facilities to be used as a host site for some of the activities and events be set at $10,000 to cover the custodial maintenance and staff expenses and the use of the district facilities. Reimbursement for any damages would be billed separately, of course. A similar negotiated flat fee arrangement for an event such as, as large as this was used when we hosted the work camp a couple summers ago.
Black shit on that.
Yeah.
Are you going to require an insurance?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
It's a standard part of the-
That's standard.
Facility, facilities use agreement.
Yeah, definitely. The committee also recommends, to the policy committee, that we amend policy 1500 to include a special events fee, rather than when they're, when a group is coming in that needs huge areas, rather than each individual space, that we have a special events fee, like we've done this last two times. And that would allow for a separately negotiated fee when a multi-day or multi-use facility is required. So we're passing that on to you. Our third item was the Albany Place Development, the IDA situation. Don Sapos, the Gilderland IDA CEO, informed the school district that the IDA would be the entity to review and decide on any tax exemption requests from the Albany Place Development, the LLC, that was asking to convert the Best Western Sovereign Hotel into senior residences. After discussion, the committee recommends that the board not provide any new statements to the IDA. We're very comfortable with the first statement we made when this issue came up the last time, so we're going to stay with that one. Oh, that's what we're recommending. And finally, our fourth item was building space needs. Due to enrollment growth, Alton Elementary School will be adding a third section of second grade. Currently, the school does not have a spare classroom to add the extra section. So the committee recommends that the district notify Victory Childcare of the request to reduce the number of rooms available for rental next year, the next school year, to accommodate the enrollment growth at Altamont Elementary, as well as the continuation of the need for one additional classroom space at Pine Bush Elementary. And that's going to be communicated to Victory, which seems to have worked okay.
Okay, any questions for Gloria?
Is that part of the scope of the agreement that we signed last year?
Mm-hmm. We have that in there in case we need, that it's open again.
We don't need a board approval based on what we wrote, right?
Right.
Probably have to give adequate notice, right?
Yeah, there's a, there was a contract amendment that the board approved last year that has a notification requirement, so we don't need to negotiate the agreement or have board approval. What it does allow us to do is, if it's mutually beneficial, to change the original room arrangement, the number of rooms leased either on behalf of the school district or on behalf of Victory Childcare. We have the ability to notify each other of our request and if we can both agree, we can make that change.
The room is empty right now, so it should be mutually beneficial to both of them.
Correct.
So that will probably be our last meeting of the year, and I do want to thank Kathy, Judy, and Teresa and Neil, our minutes taker, for all the work this year.
And Gloria. Thank you.
One quick comment.
Yeah.
When you bring up Victory, this is a suggestion I think the policy should look at and see if the board would approve, but maybe as a way to incentivize places that come and use our facilities to let them be able to use backpack mail and advertise as well, which would help Victory in the future and would help, I think, bring in organization. I think that's not a topic that would be.
Communications, Gloria?
We didn't meet amazingly. No report this time.
Okay. Policy, Barbara?
Have not met.
Hi. Now, public comment number two. Linda, has anybody signed up? Okay. Now we'll move on to board issues, ideas, and sharing, and I believe Judy would like to discuss one issue.
Yeah, Area 7 Director for NISBA has been Barbara Morrow for the last two years, and she is not going to be the director, she is resigning from that position. Kathy Lewis has asked me if I would bring her name up for nomination. We've included her resume. She's currently the president of CAPS, which is how I know her. Works very hard, is from the Schenectady School District, and seems to me that she would be a great representative. So at our next meeting, I'd like to vote on, we have to fill out a nomination form and submit it, but I would like the board to do that if people are agreeable.
Okay, great, thank you. Anyone else? Seema?
I just had a question. Last time, we talked about the kindergarten start date, and I know we haven't had a policy meeting yet, I just don't know where, what's next.
It's on our agenda for a leadership team meeting tomorrow.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Gloria?
I just want to thank the staffs at the high school and middle school, and those are the ones I've been to for all the recognition ceremonies that were set up and the foreign language department that did the extravaganza. I mean, there's been so much going on. I know people have been very busy, but it's very much appreciated, the invitations.
Thank you. Anyone else? Teresa?
I just had a couple things. One was, before going to the FMS PTA meeting, I was asked by a couple FMS parents if there was anything that was going on regarding the heat issues at FMS, and I brought that up at the PTA meeting. It's been hot, but we've had just a couple hot days that students apparently are going home and complaining to their parents that it was brutal going to school. So I didn't know if there was anything that we could do in the interim. I know that Mr. Lester, who was there, had mentioned that, you know, he was trying to get some, he got some fans going just to circulate some of the air, because upstairs, obviously, is hotter than downstairs. Just wanted to bring that up to the board, that we needed to get something going on. Just for those particular days, I think the beginning, end of spring, beginning of summer, and the early, late summer, early fall months, that we might get hot days in that building, apparently. It's one of the worst buildings in our campus versus the elementary schools and the high school, so if we could just do something regarding that. And the other thing that was brought up at the PTA meeting was the Arts and Ed BOCES program that's negotiated through the school district, apparently. This is all new to me, so I wasn't really familiar with it at all, but if there was a way that we could get something negotiated with BOCES so that apparently through this program, Arts and Ed BOCES program, you can share with other school districts to get things like authors and other programs where you basically share the expenses through BOCES? Is that something that we could?
We have done that in the past. I'm not sure if we're participating this year. Damian would be the person.
Not aware that we're doing that.
Apparently, we're not doing it, but we have done it previously.
Yeah, we used to do a cost-sharing arrangement. The district would pay part of the cost, the PTA would pay part of the cost. The issue is when you go through BOCES, they add on another fee, so it becomes more expensive than if you were to contract directly with the individual. So now, when you're splitting the cost, it was more of a burden for the PTA.
But it sounded like it was more economical to do it that way, even though there was an additional fee, because you're splitting the cost with another district.
Well, splitting the cost with another district.
I don't want to misspeak. Is that what you were saying yesterday, yesterday's meeting?
It's just a program that you could look at and bring different programs.
But was it more, it sounded like it was more cost-effective to do it through a program like this versus doing it solely through the district, because you would be sharing the expenses with another district?
It's really just the BOCES aid ratio. So anytime you use BOCES to access programming, we would get the aid back the following year. And it's a mechanism to look at arts and enrichment programming, similar to sort of what we did at the K, excuse me, the enrichment program through the Saratoga BOCES that I was talking about. So it's similar to that in terms of a COSER, but by using them, it would just, the aid ratio on the following year would come back. That's the only difference. But Neil's right, the administrative fees that they tacked on, you know, you'd have to see whether or not it would be something that would be beneficial, so.
Okay, thank you. Chris?
I don't remember if we, it's been so long now, if we mentioned it, but several of us were at the special ed PTA. I know Tim was there also, and then it did get chartered. And so I just wanted to say congratulations to Kim and everyone who worked so hard, and I think it's a great idea. I think it will give a voice to a lot of parents, at least for the first two meetings, it seemed like, a lot of sharing, a lot of good ideas, so.
And she has worked hard.
She has worked hard to do it.
And I think I asked this before too, so now that it's chartered, are we going to have that also as some liaison to that too, like on the list?